Good morning to the Brookfield Selectmen's meeting, first in March 24th, 2019. If you'd like to rise and join with the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start the meeting with, we have an expense warrant. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve an expense warrant for $319.18 of $146,668.18.
Do you have that motion?
I will second that motion, in favor.
Alright.
Our next thing on our agenda is policies and procedures. Read the Treasurers Department, and I would like to introduce DeeDee Malone, who comes, she's retired from the town of Paxton. She comes, she was a former treasurer collector, and she has 17 years of experience up in Paxton, and she's down here as a consultant to help Lonnie out.
Thank you.
You're welcome, so if we want to turn it over to you.
Okay, basically I was contacted to see if I could come in and, you know, help Lonnie with a few things. And I've been here for about three weeks on and off, and I have to tell you, you have a wonderful town hall staff.
Oh, thank you.
They've all been supportive, any questions that I've had, they've answered. It's opened up a lot of different ways of possibly streamlining the process here, and with helping Lonnie and Mike and Brenda, so far, that's where we're at. And I think Lonnie has done a great job as far as trying to feel her way through as to what's, you know, what should be, what's happening, et cetera. So I'm going to let Lonnie have some questions, and hopefully between all of us, we can answer them, and then figure out how we want to move forward. Okay, so Lonnie Creashia, interim treasurer. Um, thank you, DeeDee. So, thank you all for coming today, because I know everyone is super crazy busy, so I really appreciate that, thank you. In working with DeeDee, and like she just mentioned, we're finding a lot of items that could be more streamlined, more, I don't want to use the word easier for everybody, but a procedure that is just from A to B, get it done, it's better for the town, it's better for the town's finances. Introduce DeeDee. So, going over the procedures, some of these procedures have been presented to this board already by Keith Arsenault, when he was helping myself, as well as Monica. And being new in this department, new, second time interim, we're trying to streamline these procedures to make them less time-consuming for the collector, the accountant, the treasurer's office, and the selectmen, as well as try and make it less expensive for the town. So, first of all, one of the items that was recommended by both Keith, or by Keith, DeeDee, and our auditor, George Hunt, who did come in, and I sat with him a little bit, the warrants. After speaking with the auditor, the warrants should probably be presented once a week. Right now, we had certain dates, we've had five warrants on one day, and that's very time-consuming for our department, for the selectmen, to read through them all and sign them all, and if you had any questions to get back. Five warrants is an awful lot. So we would like to see that the warrants are done once a week, unless with the payroll, it falls on that week, so there'll be two warrants that week. And, what else? Bear with me, I gotta read my notes. A suggestion to that would be if every department had their warrants in, ideally on a Wednesday for the town accountant, at the times that she would like, and make payable the following week, so that way they're presented at the selectmen's meeting Tuesday evening, so you have them to go over and, and just read through and make sure. And then this would eliminate the four warrants being done on the same date, just kind of as they were in February. And actually, this will comply with the auditor's request to limit some confusion. Except for the one on the last day of the month, because that could fall on a non-working day, Friday, Saturday, whatever. Uh, let's see. That also would go with the bank's requirement. You have your banking account, which is a money market account, which only allows six withdrawals per month, by law. And it's a good account to have, because it certainly gives you higher interest. But if you did the four warrants and two payrolls per month, that would solve that issue also, because the bank will not allow you, and they will penalize you for doing more than six withdrawals. And if you do it one month or two months in a row, they will actually change that account, because by law, you can't do that. Correct, so we've had that happen, so I've had to call the bank, and I guess the first time around, when I received a letter, and it really freaked me out. It's pretty, you can't do it, because they will close the account on you. Let's see, so when the select boards meet, you'll have the two warrants to sign, okay. So that's for warrants.
Now, is this something that we will get each week or every other week?
Do you, what do you meet?
We meet every other Tuesday.
So, on the Tuesday that you meet, you will get a, two of them, because you'll get them for the payroll, as well as the vendors.
Okay.
And you might get two warrants, too. So that week, you would have three, two warrants and a payroll. And that would be it until the next Tuesday. Yeah, and it would make it so much easier for Carrie. Do you have a question?
I do, but I'll wait till you're up.
Okay. It would make it easier for her. She can start a warrant today and not post it until Monday.
Yes.
You know, so, you know, it's, it's no, she can add to it right along, every single night if she wants to, but the posting date is when the checks go out. By doing that, number one, your mailing is going to be much less, because you're not going to be mailing checks, sometimes you mail double checks to different people for different warrants. So your mailing would be much, much better, and much less time-consuming for everybody. Carrie, you have a question?
Yes. I would just like to address that, in that there generally is only one warrant with checks on it, except the school. The school has requested that their warrants be kept separate for their record-keeping. So, we can talk together about how to fix that, but the school has requested that, that's why there's...
So how often do you do a school warrant?
Once a month.
Once a month, okay.
The other thing is, all of the other warrants that might be produced on the same day would be either a debit transaction, a wire transaction. Those things aren't put on the main warrant, and that's for purposes of different accounts. So how would we account for those separately?
You also do no-check warrants? In that warrant, you have all the checks, and then you can have, at the bottom, no checks.
So you would like those separated, rather than put together, on one warrant?
On one warrant.
And I, and you just want them separated as debit transactions, or?
They're, they're considered, yeah, no checks. And then, do you do a summary at the end, so that...
Yes.
Okay, so that she can see what department those come out of, or for instance, Mike does deposits.
Correct.
Say, to perpetual care and sale of lots. So if there were a warrant to come out of perpetual care, at the end of the warrant, do you do a summary, so she sees how much comes out of perpetual care?
Yes, it is produced with each warrant.
Alright, and do you circle it, so somehow she knows that that comes out of perpetual care? Are those the only accounts that are set up separately than your town accounts, your perpetual care?
Those go all on the same warrant.
They go on the same warrant, yes.
But no, I don't circle them.
What other, what other checks or non-checks come out of different accounts, other than your general fund?
None, they all come out of the vendor account.
Okay, so perfect. So then, you would do your regular checks on the warrant, and at the end, you would do whatever you have for no checks, and then she knows that those, she has to be the one that transfers that money.
Okay, so I just want to verify, you want everything all on one warrant, and just to note on the warrant summary, what is debit, what is wire? Okay, I can do that.
Who does the debits and wire?
Um, we work in tandem with that. If they want to use the debit card, what happens is, they put the order online, place it on hold, or wherever they need to use the debit card. I produce the warrant, I bring the paperwork to Lonnie. We have an agreement that she can transfer the funds prior to signature, because of debit situation.
Perfect.
And then she transfers the money, and once that happens, she, one of us will let the department know that they're okay to use the funds.
Yes, right.
Does that sound...
Excellent, works out well.
Yeah.
So before we get to the next topic, one of the things that happened at the point of Monica coming on board was I handed to her the most up-to-date revision status of the financial policy document, and I believe that's still in your office.
It could be.
I pray.
I believe she's still past that. I could be wrong. If you haven't seen it already, she kept it right to the side of her computer.
I haven't looked for it, to be honest with you, so I don't, I don't know.
Alright, so we're gonna look for it. And then the second piece of it is that we were, all the other departments, we had had a series of meetings where we got to the treasurer's office, and because she was coming on board, we stopped at that point to have her review what the treasurer document looked like at that time. And then what I'm hearing here this morning is that we have a procedure that's in place, and that it would appear that we want to modify that procedure, or more codify that, this process that you just discussed. What I would recommend, highly recommend, is we find the document, we find the reference paragraph, or whatever, where this fits, and that we update. And again, I have it electronically, so if you can't find it electronically, I will resend it. And you can take the advantage of updating the procedure to say, this is what it was, this is what it wants to be, and essentially by doing this, we can vote, selectmen can vote to say, yep, that's what we're going to do, and that is, that would be the policy.
Excellent. So that's the policy manual?
Policy, financial policy, it's a notebook that's about that deck. And it has all of the notes of the earlier meetings, and what we did to update the various sections. And again, we were waiting for the treasurer input to stamp it and say, this is the policy, the current policy and procedure manual, right? So I, again, I, best that we document, and again, if you could help, that would be great.
Absolutely, that would be great, thank you.
And again, with your, with your time here, if we can get, circle back to that document, I think it's important.
We'll look for it after the meeting. One of the other things that's come to mind is that Lonnie doesn't have access to a lot of the VEDAR accounts online that she needs.
Okay, Mike can adjust what you need.
I believe I need, Holly has everything, so I will need all of that, because right now, I'm presently using hers. So mine should mirror Holly's, please.
And I don't believe, as I remember the policy book, that that, anything to do with VEDAR was listed there, so it would be an important point at this point, to update the document.
Probably, seeing where everything gets documented.
Exactly. And again, when that document was put together, it wasn't, it wasn't the case, and now it is the case. We need to update the document.
How long ago was that document put in place?
2017.
Oh, yeah, 17 was the last touching of it, but, but the document itself goes back to like 2012.
But very recently, you met on that?
Oh, yes, and we had a series of meetings, everybody inputted, we updated it all, and then we got stuck at the treasurer's office, and now we need the treasurer's input.
Okay, okay, that'd be good.
And Clarence has been working with them, so that we don't actually call it a regular meeting. So he's been working with the procedure book.
Yeah, if you need a meeting, and you need someone to chair a meeting on that topic, and we want to circle back to it, when you're ready, I'm ready.
Perfect. Are you aware of the fact that Mike wants to do online payments for the town clerks? Okay, well, that was another thing that was...
Yeah, you could, I was gonna hear that.
Oh, so, if I may, Michael. So Stacy, who is our Unibank representative, met with Michael, the town clerk, about, Michael was questioning whether he could get his dog license in virtual gateway? Vital records, excuse me, which are birth certificates or whatever. So I can sit at my house, and I can go online, and I can find my birth record for Brookfield, and I can pay online. So Mike sat with Stacy about doing that, and it's absolutely doable, and it's such a positive, positive, streamlining situation. So, I mean, we would like to do it. Yeah, most towns are now doing that.
And I would only say, this document, this process wants to be.
Yep, okay. Okay, if I may, so it'll get documented and everything, but will that affect right now? So like, is that okay to do, before it's documented in the manual?
What, what, okay. What I would say is, put it on a piece of paper, because this is nice conversation. The fortunate thing is that we have a lot of this on tape, but the reality is, we need a piece of paper that says, we're going to do this, this, and this, and this is how we're going to do it. And I want all of you shaking your heads in the right direction, in the same direction, because if you're not, we're not going to do it.
Exactly.
Alright, so...
I also want to look into that for the water car.
I think that's a huge progress in this town, with everything, everything that we can digitize moving forward.
Absolutely.
To make it more efficient for everyone.
But, but again, when you, when you're going and doing the digitizing, you must, one, be in concert, and two, it must be, you're going to have a policy book that has a procedure, and that's what you're going to do. And if there's any question, that's what you're going to do, unless you need to change it. I spent a few years in working on that, that kind of stuff, as they, they know.
Exactly.
And so, the more that you can write down, so that it's, then everybody's comfortable with it, the better.
Okay.
So, one question on that, can we put those things, because Stacy was a little leery about adding more accounts to the bank? Can we have that directly into your account?
No, that, Michael will probably have his own account. It might be the, it might be considered the treasurer's account. It certainly isn't going to be your account. Yeah, no, you've got way too much going on at this point.
I have eight pages of exercise, so on Unibank, so once people get into it, they love it.
Yeah, in Paxton, we have it on the treasurer's account. And, and it takes a while for, you know, everybody to get used to using it, and then Mike will get used to, you know, things, so it's, it's a learning curve for everybody. Carrie, the one question I had for you was, when was the last time that you actually proved with Monica?
Never. That has been an ongoing problem. I was not able to balance with Keith either. So my understanding was that I had hired somebody to balance both departments through fiscal '17, the end of fiscal '17, which has been done. And then, at the end of fiscal '18, there had been no reconciliation, so that's when Mr. Hunt was hired to reconcile the cash at that point. That was something I want to talk to you guys about today, because the document that I got...
That, yeah, I put in your box?
Right, that's just reconciliation of the treasurer's cash. My understanding was that he was supposed to be reconciling both sides.
Okay, so that has not been done?
No, and I was expecting, from conversations with both him and Monica, that I would get a monthly reconciliation with the variances, and that's not what I got.
Okay.
I got a year-end cash balance, that's it.
Will you be contacting him to ask him about that?
I can, with...
Who hired him?
Monica.
So just so far, just the treasurer's cash has...
Just the treasurer's cash is what I received, yeah.
Yours hasn't yet.
Correct.
Isn't Justin doing your side, though? Isn't that what all this was about?
No.
No?
FY '18 was supposed to be George Hunt. My balancing with the treasurer's department was just George Hunt, that was his, that was his sole project.
I'll have to ask what his...
Okay.
Alright, so...
Okay, so I was, I was concerned when I got that. I'm glad it's reconciled with the bank, but with that document, I have no way of reconciling on my side with just that one document. That's, it's nearly impossible.
Alright, so we'll have to contact him and find out what he was hired to do.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you haven't ever reconciled with the treasurer's?
I, I did, and we are reconciled through the end of fiscal '17. If you'd like, I can provide you that month-to-month spreadsheet. I have also calculated the cash reconciliations based on the reports that my auditor did, so that I do have month-to-month discrepancies. I can, I can point out to you which, which items are on my cash book, which ones are on your cash book, things like that. But nothing has been...
I guess the best thing to do would be to speak with George, and find out where the...
And I'll go over with you guys to the reconciliation for fiscal '17, so you can see where I have reconciled all that. And, and that one does go month-to-month, so that we can see, okay, so, you know, this check was voided on the treasurer's side, but I don't have documentation on my side. That type of thing is what we're looking for for fiscal '18.
Okay.
Because we need to have Scanlon and the voters in here to audit us, and they said they wouldn't come back until we had the audit, until both of you had your cash reconciled.
Right, and again, I had anticipated, when we got the documentation from George, that it was going to be a complete reconciliation between the departments. So, and that's, I can get Schedule A done now with just the reconciliation of cash. I can account for the discrepancies and report it to the DOR, as is. But it is not going to be 100%, and it is not going to be accurate. So, but unfortunately, given the time restraints, that's probably what we're going to wind up doing.
Alright, so I'll, I'll contact George and see what he was hired for, and then we'll go from there and figure out. Yeah, these are all time-sensitive issues, so...
Yeah, I...
And also, I provided him all of my side of the documents. So I, I know he had to have looked at it, because I gave him all sorts of documents from my records. So I'm sure he's done it.
Okay.
I just may not have the documentation.
Okay, alright.
And I didn't get an email with him from, with spreadsheets or anything, so... If he's done it, great, if not, we'll have to figure out what we, we got to do moving forward.
And another thing that I had a question on, Carrie, was just your turnovers. When turnovers come into her department, do you post them as of the date of the turnover? Or do you post them as of the date that they went to the bank? So a batch?
I don't control that. That is 100% controlled by that department.
Perfect.
So when Lonnie does her receipts, she does it, I'm sure you've seen that site already. So what happens is, she transmits it over to me, and then I just post it. I double-check the accounting, and I post it.
Okay.
So I don't change anything unless I see a discrepancy in an account number, in which case I would change it on my end, and send Lonnie a copy.
Perfect.
I think it's only been dated once.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, so, okay, so my date. I gotta write this down, I did it first. I think probably that answers most of our questions.
Turnovers.
Yep. The turnovers, so for process, procedure, um, hold on, I gotta look. I would, oh, go ahead. I think we need to just, is that addressed in this policies?
I don't think...
No.
It is, turnover procedure is addressed in the policies.
Do you know, Carrie, offhand, what it is?
Ideally, this is what should happen, we don't know it doesn't. But the departments are supposed to fill out their turnover sheets, and turn them into Lonnie or Holly. They are supposed to sign off on the turnover sheet. Then I get a copy of the signed document, Lonnie keeps the originals, and she does what she does on her end. What's been happening is, nobody gets me a copy, signed anyway. So I have like zero signed turnovers.
Excuse me, when you say signed, signed by the treasurer?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, so you're, since Lonnie's come back on, she has been providing me the signed copies. So that's fine. The breakdown, I think, is in the people turning over their cash. They are not, they do not have patience, they do not follow procedure, and they refuse to be here when the office is available, so...
Well, I think that's one of the things we're going to speak of now. So turnovers, I would like to see them done once a week. I would like them to our office by 11:00 a.m. on Thursday. That way, they can be processed, done, and put in the bank that day. Checks can be put in my box outside the door, cash has got to be handed to me. If they don't hand me cash, then that's on them. So I would like to see it done once a week, at least brought to this department, and this department will process it once a week. And then that way, too, once it gets into this VEDAR system, then it's a flow. It's just a constant flow. So Carrie can put into her scheduling, knowing that, oh yeah, it's Thursday, I'll be seeing turnovers put in the system, she can do what she needs to do. We can get department, and I think, as Carrie just mentioned, it is departments, or department heads. So I think, you know, following this procedure, we can put a memo out, or...
That's what I was just going to suggest, a memo.
Absolutely, because it's a change. It is our policy, but it needs to be followed. And, and it needs to be followed for a sense of accountability. That old saying, it does make things simpler for everyone, and that whole KISS method is really, it works, because it's just bring your turnover in, you're done, now it's my turn, then after that, it's Carrie's turn, it's just a flow.
And they should know...
I don't like seeing turnovers left in the box, so I don't like anybody walking away without that signature in front of them. Without counting that money in front of them, signing...
Full cash.
Full cash.
Or checks.
Yeah, but at this point, what'll happen is, if I run to the ladies' room, she's not at her desk. If I run out of the building, she's not at her desk. So then it comes back to this office, where your treasurer is never here, and I can never give the money. So I think if we can follow the process, I'll even get a lockbox like Brenda has, and have that on the outside of my office, or the office, excuse me. But it, cash has to be given to us, but I know what you're saying, because I don't like it either. But the problem is, is like I just said, the second someone comes in, and for, I could be in a meeting, whatever, I don't need to justify every two seconds where I'm at, and then it's going to be a problem. And then that just makes it crazy again.
So let's go get this document. Let's make sure that what you're talking about is in that document, and then this, this office will, will approve it.
Will approve it.
And that's the way we're going to operate.
When is your next meeting?
Tuesday.
This next week?
No.
Oh, two weeks, two weeks. Yeah, because we'll get the odd month.
April 2nd.
And with those weekly turnovers, that will also include the tax collector.
Yeah, we were talking about that.
Yeah.
It'll make it so much easier.
Brenda is just ages of trying to catch up, trying to get ahead, trying to do anything. And yeah, weekly would make your life so much easier. Yeah, so... It really is just, and yours, a simple, good, uh, going forward. It will, it will really, it'll make everyone's life easier, because, you know, you'll know that you have, you know, you're going to get my turnovers in, now by 11:00. They're done, they're not your problem anymore, they're ours. So it'll be, make, I think, things simpler, more streamlined, more convenient, more communication if necessary. I think it'll be really, really good, I really do.
I think it also will be, too.
So I think what we'll do is, sit down and compile everything for you for the April 2nd meeting, if you could put the documents on, and we'll try to find the book in the office. I'm not sure, I haven't seen it, but you're in the impression, Carrie, that it never came back to the treasurer's office?
I, I have not spoken to Monica since December, so, but the last I knew, she had it with her at home, and she was working on it, and that was via text, so...
Is it possible...
Check the box of paperwork, Lonnie.
I'm sorry?
Check the box of paperwork.
So it is, just humor me, is it a binder, what is it?
It's a white binder.
It's a white binder.
That thing.
Okay, have you seen it in the office, Holly? Have you seen it in the office, Holly?
I have not.
Okay.
No.
So is it?
She had it, she was working on it.
Okay, is it possible to contact Monica?
Well, we've tried a lot of times and she hasn't gotten back to us. We've texted her, we've called her.
If I may, if you have it in an email.
I have it electronically.
Okay.
I will send it to you.
Correct, but has any of the changes that have been updated on the Treasurer's end been sent to you so it's already combined?
No.
Okay.
So what, where we were is all the departments had done it with the exception of the Treasurer's office.
Mm-hmm.
And all of that is in there. Now it's that one section.
So this actually might work out better, so that way the things that we are finding daily to make it a better-run office for this town. So it might work out better where if it's already existing and we can add to it and update it.
Right, it's, and again, the notebook had the old, had the notes of why we went from old to new, and then new. So I'm, what I'm gonna send you is, I'll send you both the old and I'll send you the recommended. And again, this office did not vote on the recommended. We, we wanted the Treasurer piece to be able to then do that, so the sooner we can do that piece, the better.
Are you voting separately per department or on the whole entire document?
On the document.
On the document itself.
Okay.
So the original one is, is in vogue. We agreed to agree in the different meetings of procedures and process that went into the revision. And now it's the section of the Treasurer that needs to be touched.
Have you also done a employee handbook?
That's what we're working, we're working on that now for the Personnel Board.
Okay.
An employee handbook.
Cause that, that was my next question, because I haven't seen one in that office either.
Yeah, because that, the one that we have now probably is over thirty years old.
Yeah.
And it's included in with the town bylaws, so we wanna get a vote of the town to take it out of the town bylaws.
Okay.
So that if we have any changes that need to go on, any classifications, that, you know, the Selectmen can have control and, you know, they can, if we wanna add a job, then, you know, they can vote to add the job instead of having to wait for a town meeting to come around and do that town meeting.
So when an employee starts within the town, do they get any, anything that tells them what their?
No.
Benefits?
No, what, this is what we wanna do with this policy and handbook for the employees, this is what they will get.
So do, do employees have so many sick days or anything like that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, Holly can probably tell you more on that, how many they have.
Alright.
They have a battle package and everything, it's, it's explained to them when they.
Okay.
If they're sent.
Oh, that's the problem. Yeah, uh we do have department, like the school, well, obviously they're not, but um there are departments though, will just receive paperwork and.
That is another.
They don't come directly here and that isn't. Yeah, we've been trying to.
Yep.
Change that for quite a while, but there are still departments that don't.
I believe there's a procedure, I'm sorry to interrupt you, a procedure in place for that where they should come to the Treasurer's office because this, we have the paperwork. Um I can see if an office has a copy of, maybe they wanna change a direct deposit and they can't make it up here because they leave at three or what have you, fine. But um, kinda goes with the turnovers, that's departments don't wanna follow procedure.
We do get, well, I didn't know you offered that or.
Yeah.
I.
Right.
Don't know who you are.
And they, and they should come to our office because we're the ones that, you know, that, that they, I mean, we, we handle their paychecks, so they might wanna come and, so we can be introduced to and they can ask questions and they can look at their file if need be. I mean, it's, it's.
Cause you're.
It's an intimate relationship with the employee at that office level. Yep, so you are working on that and that's all, you know, yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
That's good.
Excellent. Do you think of anything else? Um, so it's a work in progress for everybody. I don't know what the procedures are in place for certain things, but if we change them, I think that it will be really good. And I think that it will be good for everybody, it's gonna streamline so many things. Um, the other thing is, I also know this is, this is not an overnight miracle happening, I know that. So um, after we present the board with um our updated policy manual, if that's, what'd you say, April second?
Yep.
Okay, so if we have it done by then and you vote on it, um I guess either the, within the, by May first, I would like to see the procedures in place and.
Well, let's, let's make it real simple. I'll give you a document that was the original. And that is what you're supposed to be living to today, whether you like it or not. What, there's a section which is the revision that in fact yours, the Treasurer's office didn't change because of the original. So it really would behoove you to provide the changes from original to now as to how we wanna operate or how we are operating. Such that we can approve the document as of April second and that's the way we're gonna live.
Yeah. Perfect. Correct, yes.
And that will be communicated to all departments.
Yes, excellent, excellent. I, I think, um, is there any kind of ramification if they don't? I mean, it seems like.
Well, if we need to.
It's a good idea, but they're not gonna do it, you know? I'd like to think that everybody will, I think it would be um, you know, it, it's not about pleasing me. It's not about pleasing you. It's about pleasing the rules and the regulations and the laws and, and just the flow and, and the public and the citizens of this town. So I really think.
Right.
That here, you have a good, close group of people who work here as well as who are um active in the community. So I, I don't.
I'd like to say I think everybody will follow suit, I really do.
And if not, well, then we'll have to figure that out. What, the Selectmen will have to deal with it.
Yeah, we'll deal with them.
Sooner than later.
Yeah, I agree, I think it's, I think it's a positive note going forward.
We've gotta get, we've gotta get things back on track. I mean, we've had so many different turnovers the last couple of years. So we've got to get things back on track and have everything running smooth.
Yep.
Yep.
We have to.
Wonderful. So I guess for us, um, thank you all for coming and listening.
You're welcome. Uh Brenda, do you have anything at all that you would like to add?
No, not really.
Okay. No, I didn't know if you did.
Just keep doing what you're doing.
Yes.
Just continue doing what you're doing.
We were working together trying to get to the bottom of some little issues and.
Do you feel as though you need to have a clerk?
I would like to. Um, things have changed, I think, in the last five or ten years with collections. You know, I went from one account to, you know, four or five and the online payments are time-consuming. They're, you know, um, I would love to have one. And when I take time off, I, I know in the back of my head that I've got, you know, double or triple my workload when I do come back, so it's not really enjoyable. Um, I don't know, it's just, I would love to, but I don't know if that's realistic.
Baseball at the moment, well, you know, we have to figure out and see if there will be any money in any account. You know, that we could fund, you know, pay the collector's clerk.
And it's, it's an odd situation because it seems like February and it's when the collections, like right now, I sent out four or five thousand doll, uh four or five thousand excise bills. Plus Janu, uh February first, all the uh real estate was due, so it's a crazy busy time right now. And then trying to, you know, get these guys, uh fix that mess and it's just, so it's, but then next month it might be fine, so it's just, it's, I guess.
And then May first is gonna come rolling around.
Yeah, and then I'm trying to, trying to take some vacation this year, but it's, you know.
So is there uh an agency that you can hire to?
I don't know, I hired two people and it didn't go well, so.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, because you've got the off and on.
Are there other departments that have a similar situation? Um I know in Paxton, we're, we're hiring a municipal employee. Um and that person will help the town clerk when um the town clerk puts out the census and has, I don't know, three thousand envelopes to, to open coming back. Um, and that time is usually January, um when the town clerk is extremely busy. And then that person would go into the collector's office and help the same way. Um when the collector is extremely busy. And that person would be able to cover, um, it, just opening the mail and that kinda stuff um when someone's on vacation. And they're gonna call it a municipal employee. Um and she's gonna help with the Water Department, DPW, and kinda float around. Uh when the different departments.
Well, I thought we did have that in place.
Lois is a municipal clerk, I don't know, she might have her hands full though.
So we also have, um, I'm sorry.
I, I just have a few things to add to that. I think what you say is, is a good idea. Um recently, I think it makes sense to hire somebody in-house, somebody that's computer savvy to cover for Brenda when she's on vacation, biggest complaints is when she's gone. You've got those issues, I mean, you just hired somebody to help Carrie here, five hours. You established an account for that. You know, if you had to add a little to that, you use that same person, you don't have to go out and hire.
You can't use the same person that Carrie has because she just got a new title as an assistant assessor and the assessors commit the bills to the tax collector and you can't work for the tax collector.
So you're saying it's a conflict of interest?
Conflict of interest.
That role.
Sorry.
For that.
For that role.
That particular individual, that role.
So she can't, she can't work for.
That's what I was gonna suggest, but I didn't know that.
Okay, so we have, and we can't do that, so that, okay, that door's closed. What, what door's open? The door's open that Brenda needs stuff, he needs stuff in January, she needs stuff in, in February, March, May, and May. And yeah, so what I would recommend is, whether we can do it between now and then, Linda, the reality is, we're looking at the fiscal budget for next year. Uh guess what, Mike, Brenda, make sure that there's a, either a mutual line or whatever in your FY twenty, right, uh budget. And let's, let's.
Yeah.
Let's.
We have, we have to get there.
It just gives some coverage. I mean, basically it counts for vacation time. One of the things that improved this year was when excise taxes were due or real estate taxes, all of us got together and we stuffed in bills. We did it in short order. That saves you a tremendous amount of time.
Yep.
So that's when we're all working in unison, we could make a di, you know, a big difference. So that's a, a money saver. And, you know, we all cover for each other when we can, you know, when somebody's gone, so we're good. And I don't think it's. I don't think this has to be a real costly thing either. I mean, cause we just covered some ground on the busy times when Brenda's away, so. It's, it's, I think it's simple. I don't think we have to make it complicated.
Could we maybe talk to Tantasco about some sort of an internship with their business program? Where it wouldn't cost the town anything?
I would pay, again, my experience with interns is if you're really serious about it, well, I would first go put the hours in there so the dollars are there.
Yeah.
Absolutely that. Where you have interns, yes, you can get some volunteer stuff, because it's a project and it's six or eight weeks or whatever. But if you wanna continuous flow, you really, you really gotta pay them, identify them and, and be able to discipline them with those issues.
It's hard to train people, because you don't have the time to train people, so I don't wanna, yeah.
And I think what Mike is saying is correct. Uh I've been rehired um to be the part-time um assistant Treasurer Collector. And I only do twelve hours a week and we're larger than Paxton and all I do really is the collection side. Um and it's, it's amazing what twelve hours a week can do to help. And I do cover when the Treasurer Collector is on vacation and that kinda stuff, but I don't go over my twelve hours. And it works, it works. Um no benefits, no, no vacation time. But I know that when she's on vacation, I'm working that week and we just work it out. So it, if you get the right person, you're right, it can really work well for you.
You also suggested putting less office hours, which.
That's another option.
Less hotel costs.
Right, exactly.
And then something else too, I think, too, you're, you're gonna be having a new office. And I think it's too congested out here actually to have your office out there. You need, you know, you need quiet so you can concentrate on that.
Right now I'm like the face of the town hall.
Oh, I know, I was out there all those years, I know.
You know, you do. So I think you're all doing the right, right things, the right steps and you just have to continue in that mode.
That's what, that's what our goal was to strive for.
So as Lonnie said, thank you guys all so much for, for working together and, and everybody helping one another, because I think we'll get balanced from two thousand and seventeen.
Great.
I think this was productive meeting, I want to thank you all for coming in.
Great.
Thank you. Okay, well, we have a few more things on the agenda, so if you wanted to come back in.
Okay.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Oh, actually, Holly probably oughta stake for the other, and these two things will take a little bit of time.
Okay, the next one on our agenda, Karen, was this under?
Cemetery deeds, that you're gonna sign the cemetery deeds.
Okay, we have a cemetery, a cemetery deed just signed here, um, that was sold.
We need to make the document.
Okay, the cemetery deed that was sold here to Greg Acton of Nineteen Main Street here in Brookfield. And um we have to sign it, so I would like motion for the Selectmen to sign it.
Motion to sign.
What number is that, what, what number is that?
Oh, did you want the deed number?
Yep.
It's deed uh three thirty-four.
Thank you.
Motion for the Board of Selectmen to sign it.
Do you have that motion? Yep.
All in favor?
Alright.
Oh, you have two.
Okay, and my motion to sign two.
Two.
Cemetery records.
What's that number, Linda?
Huh?
What's the number on that one?
Uh, this is three thirty-three.
Deed three thirty-three?
Yeah, and this is from Melissa Palmer of one seventy-six Rice Corner Road, Brooklyn.
You have that motion?
Oh, I'll second the motion, all in favor?
Alright.
This go back to you?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda here is to um add a um adopt a new position title. Uh with the, um, we had the Collins says, well, everyone knows the Collins Center was in and they had did all evaluations for everyone. And that they had suggested for the administrative assistant, they, to be a different title. They, they would like it to be called executive assistant to the Board of Selectmen. And I mean, have been, some of her duties have changed, but I, I agree with, with Mary Cardy, is that her name? Mary, and I agree with Mary that we should change the, the uh title.
The title is consistent with the job description.
Yes, and I'd like to have motion for that.
Motion to update that.
Okay.
Particularly.
Holly, do you have anything to say about this at all?
No, I, I agree.
You agree, I'll say with it.
With the title change, absolutely.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that and all in favor?
Alright.
Under, other than you have a wage authorization.
Oh, yeah.
From yesterday, yeah.
Okay, and we have a wage optimization for Stephen Stanley. Uh he was hired by the Fire Department as a firefighter for twelve dollars and eighty-one cents an hour.
Motion of proof.
I'll second that, all in favor of that?
Did you have something under?
Twenty-one?
Twenty-one, nineteen. Okay, alright, and now, did we want to maybe, anything that's corresponding stuff? Did we wanna, probably now, Holly, you discuss a little bit of the new step in grades and things?
Oh, okay, I didn't know about that.
Well, I know that Mary Lou wanted to be present during that.
Okay.
She wanted to, um, she actually was going to see if she could be on the agenda at some point. So that we could come and explain to the Select Board.
So let's schedule something the next week.
Okay, so did you, um.
And we also need to go to the Advisory Board.
Now, I, I missed yesterday's meeting, so did you come to an agreement on the um, on steps in the grades? So, did you come to an agreement on the, on the steps in the grades that are told by the board?
Well, it's, it's basically the step, we didn't move up a step. It's a step that where everybody in town will be getting the raise.
Yes.
It varies. But they did move it where everybody will be getting something.
Oh, okay.
So, you didn't move the extra step like we had discussed the meeting before. But it's just the first step. Everybody's going to be starting at the first step.
Yeah, and we, well, no, I attended the last meeting. I know we talked about we want to see how much it would actually affect the town by moving everything.
Yeah.
Because we are very, we found out...
Mary Lou did, she did do a spreadsheet. She did a spreadsheet. It's, it's, it's great to look at it. You'll understand it once you see it. But she did a lot of work on that, so...
And then we found out from doing the survey, you know, the Collins Center, that Brookfield is one down the bottom of the barrel on paying here employees. And we have to get, we have to get them up because we've got good people here. We want to keep our people.
And we don't want the turnover.
No, we don't want the turnover. We had too much turnover in the last few years. So, we want to keep them.
So, we've got to work at this.
Yeah, and the advisory board has to be, we are well aware of this.
Yeah, well, and it gets back to that clear government thing, grant that Kathy's applying for. So, that we'll have documentation as to our peers and what they're doing. Not that we have to pay more than our peers, but just be consistent such that that you don't have the skipping from town to town just because of a dollar here or a dollar there.
Then also, weren't you, we also did something like a longevity?
Longevity, yes.
Well, how long?
Five, ten, fifteen, twenty years.
Because a lot of the communities do have that. Because, you know, after you had your employee here for five years, you kind of know they're not going to be going anywhere. So, we want to be able to keep them here in our community.
While we can, exactly. So, yeah, I would recommend that we schedule a time, you know, similar to this so that Mary Lou can be present sooner than later.
Yes.
Yeah, probably a morning, probably a morning meeting would be better.
All right, just let me know when she intends and we'll schedule.
I'll give her a call today and ask her.
Because what we want to do, you know, when town meeting comes up, we would like to vote to take the personnel bylaws out of the regular bylaws. And we want to call it a policy book. And then what we could do, the town council had mentioned that what we can do, then the selectmen will have the control over them. And so, like, if we want to add a class, job classification, we don't have to wait for a town meeting. The selectmen can afford to add in that.
And again, back to the peer group of towns, knowing what they do and what we do. Having it as a part of bylaws does not make sense.
No, doesn't make sense because we have to wait around for a town meeting to come to do anything with it.
Right.
So, that's what we like to do.
And there's so many details. And again, that's why I asked Holly to stay. There's so many details around human resources that you have to be cognizant of today. And you can't wait for a town meeting as you have these mandates that come at you. So, it's, we need to get, just as we have this financial policy documented and updated, we have to have an HR policy and procedures such that it's clear. Because again, the letter that you received yesterday, again, I don't want to mention names because of the sensitivity of personnel issue. But we missed something, it appears, Holly. And so, with that, though we can't cover the shortfall and the individuals responsible for the shortfall, we, this is a perfect example of why that document needs to be in place.
Yeah. And then, you know, and then when we have a new hire, the new hire will get this book and they will sign that they have this book. If there's anything that goes on, you know, they, they say, oh, we need to understand this. We have something saying, he signed the tape, this book, and he understands the policies and the procedures.
So, I'm going to jump ahead just because the light is sitting between Holly and I, that you can respond or you would respond to this, that the town essentially can't pay the shortfall.
The treasurer should probably.
Respond? Yeah. Monica was in touch with, with the regional. It is, we are not responsible as a town for this at all. Yeah, this is something that would have been taken out anyway. So, we're not responsible. And this also goes along with, I'm not saying this individual, but when you're hired for a certain amount of hours, you don't have that extra two percent being taken out. And all of a sudden, these people are just working hours. Nobody notifies us that their hours are increased or if they were even supposed to increase. And they should have fallen into that two percent. We don't know that.
So, it's not anyone particular fault, but...
No, there are different situations.
So, you make, you bring up a good point, Holly. So, let's go find this notebook because all our notes are, they're gray. Let's go find that. And that would be a perfect place where this needs to be notified.
Absolutely.
That, yes, as these hours accrue, you need to know...
And we're not aware of it.
And we're not aware. And we need to improve communication between the departments.
Exactly.
And it's all good. Not good for this individual. It's going to be a couple hundred bucks out of the pocket. But the reality is, we will get it done.
I received a letter.
Thank you. But no, I think coming from you, Linda, as far as, and for Karen's benefit, that, I mean, the first part of the letter is that the town isn't responsible, unfortunately. But that we in fact look to updating the policy book to identify the shortfall such that it doesn't happen again.
Like, that was just one of the examples. There are...
I'm sure there are. And again, Holly, if you could take some time, if we can, I'll send the electronic copies. But if you can look at the thing...
I'll run in there now and help them. I might know where it is.
Thank you.
Hopefully.
I'll still send it electronic.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Super.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Holly.
Okay, do we have, Mike, do you have anything else to bring up on your...
Just briefly, did you folks already put up the ad for the highway superintendent?
I didn't yet, I'm doing it today.
Okay, I just have a few things...
By Cindy, do the summary.
Oh, okay. You know, I had an opportunity to look at it. And I was just concerned because I heard, I heard some talk that, you know, that one of the things we're doing is we're, the job description says we're looking for somebody with, you know, a degree in civil engineering, you know?
No, there's, there's, there's a section of required and then preferred.
Yeah, so it does say preferred. So, we're not, and then I heard that, that because that was in there, that we may conceivably be hiring two people because one person would, that's not going to happen, right?
No.
How is that?
I don't, you know, someone to be a laborer and somebody to be more like the bachelor, you know...
Oh, I will be very clear with you, Mike. I will be very clear because this is important, speaking of hiring of employees. In the recommendation to the advisory board by the highway superintendent, that we have additional resources available to the highway department. Herb received, that I received because of this open space deal, a document that's about four pages long of things that we have not been doing that citizens are upset with. And as far as that work and who's going to do that work, that work hasn't been done by the highway department. I would say that the highway department is pretty, pretty well busy with the stuff that they're responsible to do. And this, this list of things that are citizen requests that we get our act together basically and maintain these monuments and the like, that we're going to, somebody's going to go do the work. And so, if there's discussion, rumor mill, whatever, as far as people out on the street worried about hiring two people, yes, the highway department put in the budget to the advisory board that we secure another individual as a laborer worker. And so, that is there. And now, we need to hire a highway superintendent.
And like I told Karen this morning, she can like put a brief synopsis of what is in it and tell them that they, you know, they need all the different holler licenses, licenses, and plus tell them that this is a working supervisor position.
Yeah, that's what I really was concerned about. It does seem to define that. But it was getting to the point, well, we're not going to have some guy behind the scenes that's not going to be laboring and then have to hire somebody else to... You know, I just, I saw the description, I got a little concerned. And then the link to the website, it just looked a little alarming when it discussed about all the liabilities that come with it. It almost made it look like it was a little scary for a person coming on with all the liabilities. And I was just going to suggest you may not want to incorporate that right now.
I have a copy of it, right, I think I, I put some copies in there, Linda.
Right.
No, I have to change it.
If you see, if you see that, I would just suggest...
I read it yesterday.
You know, you might want to reconsider.
Well, I'll make sure that the liability, that information isn't in the summary so we don't scare them away. But it will be in the...
I mean, it's an understanding, I understand that.
But she should have put a brief thing.
And then, but then it'll, then when you link on, it's going to be put out to the newspaper and posted various places. And then it will ask you to go on BrookfieldMA.us, unemployment opportunities. And then this will be, if you guys...
Yeah, I know, when I see that, that is just the last error.
Okay, so, do you want to take anything off or you want me to put, let me know?
That's the document.
That's the document.
That's the job description, I understand that.
Okay, all right.
It has been adopted.
We can't beat the switch, absolutely.
It's been adopted.
All right.
All right.
Yeah, it is what it is, unfortunately.
Well, I hope we get somebody.
Crap your fingers.
I hope you do too. Okay, so I think that is probably it. You have to make a motion to adjourn at ten forty?
Yeah, you have that motion.
I'll second it, all in favor, aye.